You ready? Good evening and welcome to the June 9, 2022 Village of Webster Board Meeting. If you would all stand please for the pledge. Jerick, would you read it?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the broad liberty of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll be seated. First thing I intend at this evening is our public forum, comments to the Village Board. So in this particular time, I would open the floor up to anyone who would like to address the board. Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna use this little clip over here in case you wanna see what I'm talking about. So I don't know, I don't know. Hi, Peter Elder, 59 Sunny Avenue. Thanks for seeing me tonight. I wanted to just briefly read the article that we've, the sort of Preservation Commission, put in the Webster Herald and online on our Facebook page about our Site of the Month for this month. We actually needed to kind of towards the end of the month, or a month that's sort of to the end of one month, to the end of the other month. But we're gonna be having another site next month, but for this month, that is for May, I guess it's last month now. We were, we wanted to recognize the area where the Village Standpipe was on South Avenue. And if you wonder, what the heck is a standpipe? There's a picture of it. I know it's not great, but it's a, a standpipe is a, is a, is something that was first used to store the water in the village. And so I'd just like to read you a really short article about the standpipe to tell you why we decided that it was a good, something good to recognize. Our sign, I think, is still on South Avenue. Sometimes it gets knocked down after you keep putting it back up again. But if you drive south towards Penfield, you'll see it on your right. And about that location is where the standpipe was. So many of you have probably driven by the two large water towers, there's only one now, on the west side of South Avenue. However, the water system for the village began long before those water towers. As the village population grew, better access to water was needed. During the late 1800s through the early 1900s, standpipes were the most popular water storage structures. In the spring of 1909, it was determined the village needed to build a standpipe in order to provide water for village residents. A standpipe is a long, legless, skinny storage tank placed next to a pump station and designed to help generate water storage and water pressure. Easements for the right of way to lay the necessary pipes were obtained. The C M Pump Company installed the pipes and Connery and Company built a 75-foot standpipe to hold 60,000 gallons of water. During the same period, the Soda's Gas and Electric Company was installing electric power to the village. They were contracted to furnish, to furnish the power to operate the pumps. On November 24, 1909, the work was completed. The long-awaited water system was approved by village authorities. The new water system brought water through wooden pipes via gravity from the spring on, on the Borkees Farm and, and on Harris Road to a concrete reservoir in the village. Pressure for the system was provided by powered electric pumps that forced water into the standpipe on South Avenue. The standpipe furnished the pressure needed for the system. Many laborers recruited from the Rochester area laid cast iron water mains throughout the village streets, thus bringing a much appreciated steady flow of water to Webster Village residents. The standpipe was ultimately replaced by the water towers, as you now see, on South Avenue. So, you know, I couldn't leave this alone. I had to kind of scratch it once I read all that. So I was like, well, what, where, I wondered where this farm was. So I was doing research on some early maps of Penfield, the 1900s, and believe it or not, you can actually see those farm locations, those plots on the map. And it's about 1.6 miles away from the village that they were laying those wooden pipes. So last meeting, I was talking to Jake about this and I said, I wonder if the pipes are still under the ground. And what did you say to me? There probably are, right? Yeah. So I mean, so there's something really neat there too, just to let you know that, but there's, there's probably remnants of that first water system really going all the way out to Penfield, still there in the ground. So anyways, that's why we decided to recognize this as our Site of the Month, because it does have some, some historical significance, not just for the water, but also just for the engineering part of it that brought it here so early in the village's history. All right, well, thank you very much.
Wood pipe.
The museum does have one short section of it.
Of the pipe?
Yes.
Anywhere else where they used it? If not, then I will close the comment portion of our meeting and we will move to our scheduled agenda. First of all, we have two resolutions. The, oh, yes. The first is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the master contract for the grant from the New York State Department of State for the Village of Webster North End Business District BOA nomination. I believe that this needs to be done within the next couple of weeks. So with approval to authorize myself to sign this, we will move forward with that. And we have talked a bit about that already. Looking for motion to approve.
I'll make that, I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to advertise a request for, for, for proposal from RFP seeking professional consultant services related to the Village of Webster North End Business District BOA nomination project. I believe that there is a tight timeline on that as well, sort of. But looking to have things done by John and, 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 picking out in August and moving into construction, or at least to doing it in September, correct? Looking for a resolution to authorize this advertisement.
I'll make that motion. Second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have our approval of Village Board meeting minutes from May 26. It's likely relatively short. And there will be additions or reactions, and I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion. I just need to know the time. I want to make sure my record wasn't broken before I agree. I'll, I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
I think my record was broken.
Sorry?
Daryl, I just have one question before you move on.
Yes.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I see at the bottom, you have DPW/Source Ready Update, One Bid Received. Was the bid accepted, rejected? Did you do anything with the bid?
Excuse me, the engineers are still reviewing it, getting references for the bid, and they're not ready to make recommendations yet, one way or the other.
Even though there's only one bid, so it's.
It's, it's. Now I just cross that off and I, I don't think.
I assume that's what you said when you asked at the last meeting.
I don't, I've slept since, I don't remember. I said, I don't remember I've slept since, something.
Sorry, I was gonna put more detail, but I wasn't sure what I could.
So now we didn't have to go around and, and where you.
That's what the town's gonna do. All right, they came in too high.
Next item is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look them over and I had asked the questions that I had, so nothing to add.
Yeah, I also did, it was actually pretty short. Yeah, nothing but. So no questions.
So I would ask for a motion to approve.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, next, we're gonna change the order of this. I don't think I would really want to keep. I know I do like your presence.
Oh, thank you.
And you have to hear it. But I'm a little out of the norm to have our treasures here. But I'm going to move item number 13 from its present position to item number five. And that is the budget modifications and transfers, because I believe that there is clarification that Marsha wanted to make, so.
Yes.
The first thing I would do is I will let her just explain this briefly to us.
Thank you, Daryl. Normally with, we only pull from the unassigned fund balance when we're short in some way. But if you recall, at the end of each fiscal year, any purchase orders that are still open get closed out. That money goes into the fund balance and then I open up new POs on the first of the next year and take that money out of fund balance again. Hopefully that rings a few bells. So this is what's happening this time. The only difference is, and for that transaction I just referred to, we don't need board approval. This year, I got a handful of POs at, like, on the last day of the year and instead of creating them and then immediately closing them out, we just waited. So the transaction, the budget mod is exactly the same. The only difference is that we need the board to approve it, because I did not create the POs before the end of the year.
But they've been carried over to the new year.
Yep. And that's true of the first budget mod in the general fund. The second one is for projects that we were hoping to do, but we didn't budget for them. And like, I can't recall exactly, but Jake had scaled back the scope of the sidewalk projects and these budget mods are gonna bring that, like, restore so that he can do the, the full project that he was hoping to do.
But obviously, some of this stuff isn't projects, like clothing?
Yes.
That's not a project?
No.
Office supplies.
Do you wanna speak to that? The office supplies?
That's clothing that you just forgot to budget for. There's none on the list and so now you're doing it?
The office supplies is, um, that one's on me. We need fire safe storage for the files that Aaron is putting together. We should have had fire safe storage all along, but now I had shorted the number of files that we need and they're like four, three, $3,000 to $4,000 each. So this is to get three, we're getting three new ones, right? We, I had only budgeted for one. So this pulls that up to three.
We're replacing the one I have in my office for personnel files as well, because I'm going downstate. So Aaron is gonna use that one in his area and I'm gonna get a bigger one for our personnel files.
And you'll have the two additional ones?
Correct.
Yep.
And if you would like to see them and try to lift them, they are now.
Wouldn't recommend it though, unless you wanna get hurt.
They're $1,000 each.
Yes.
Crazy. And the clothing is, well, this one, I think, started with Aaron. Then Aaron was out on an inspection and didn't think anyone was home. He knocked on the door and there was no answer. So he went around to the back to inspect the deck and the homeowner came out, like, who are you and why are you on my deck? He needs clothes that identify him as an employee of the village. So that kind of expanded to, do you want to?
Sure. So because we didn't wanna just order four shirts, we, um, we get a discount for ordering a little bit more. And then Jake came to me with, we have a couple employees in the back who are reach, um, getting close to 30 years service to the village. So we have one that's at 25 and one at 30 and several other ones that are approaching 15 years. If not, they have surpassed that. So we ordered, um, we'd like to order a few jackets with the village emblem on them as a, a new for service. And then in addition to that, um, so the shirts that Aaron got, we got a few for the office as well that's the Village of Webster. And they're just like colored, basic colored shirts. My goodness. I know. It's always what I talk.
If someone's not home and they don't answer the door, should, should we, should we not be going?
We don't know exactly if that's what happened.
Right, but I don't think, you know, so that's probably not a great example in my mind.
No.
Well, we should talk about, we should talk about having a badge anyways at some point.
Yes.
Really, you should have it on them.
Correct.
Just for anyone else that comes to your home. So that's something that we can do once. And, and I like that a little bit better.
If, if they have a permit, further permit process, as they give permission at their property to make inspections. So somebody, very often, especially with the deck, it's not the homeowner building the deck. So it's a contracting, might come through a final on this one and they not even told the homeowner. So I go back, well, no one's there, so I'm just gonna go back and check the deck and then someone's like, hey, what the heck are you doing here? So, yeah, you see where, you might have to pick it up by yourself somehow.
And you really should have, it's a shirt, it's just a shirt that says Village of Webster. You should be a little bit more identified, especially with today's, you know.
Yeah, I think a badge would serve a little bit better purpose. It's not like you're not.
Village of Webster.
Oh, it's gonna be really big.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
Um, so that's something we should think about. I think that'd be good.
Okay.
Should we all have a badge?
Yep.
Especially if we get into more safety and security type stuff moving forward, like most organizations are leaning to, we start doing card access on all your entrances.
Yeah.
And our badge at, at full size, like, get in the door with it, spend your stuff in competition and.
Yeah. Okay. Right now, we can make a blue one that we can make in our office with the whole thing, but it won't look that professional. So if you have a company, you can.
I know someone that makes badges that look very nice.
Some logo?
Yeah, right next door to the firehouse. I'm sure we can talk to them and maybe shovel their sidewalk once for a badge. Yeah, I mean, we normally charge them for shoveling the side, you know, doing the sidewalks and the plowing area. And so we are very responsible here in the firehouse through the district, so we can do that. Just ask them to make some badges.
But if you wanted to do it so that they're badge, we're dashing into the, you, there was a system in place and then it fell through, right? The little.
Yeah, we can, we can program that and we can get badges that you can program for the fives. I don't know, we have the five system, but I don't know who has access to it now. But we have that system in place. I just, we have to make sure we know how to do it.
And then I always hate the guy that always challenges everything. But around the jackets and stuff like that, so it's, you're starting a process. You don't realize it, but you're starting a process. So you, now you're in need. If someone's getting a jacket because they've been there 30 years and remember everybody that has 30 years now, it's a jacket. So you gotta just think about those when you make these types of decisions.
This covers everybody except one person, the one that I, that I work with. Yes, I understand.
Yeah, and when we, you put that in place, don't always think about now. You gotta, that's where my mind always goes, is that if that's gonna be a process and you put it in a handbook, 30 years, you get a jacket? I mean, that's kind of a long time to leave you a jacket personally.
I know.
Your, your statement was 15, 20, 30.
Yeah.
Let me ask the question then. At the 15th year, at 20 years, what's the expectation then?
So because it hadn't really been done before I got here and Jake had a great idea, I thought it was definitely a great honor. It was John, who'll be here for 30 years soon. So because I, we were gonna do just 10 and 20, but everyone has surpassed that by many years now. So I said, well, let's do 15 and 25. So if you hear 25, there's a, they get a polo and a jacket and they, I can put it into the handbook or something, but is that, I'm not sure if that answers your question. But basically, everybody surpassed 10 years. Everyone's almost a 15 or more. And Francis, um, 25, he'll be at 26, or he's at 26. He's at 25 and Kevin's almost a 25. So we just wanted to do something nice to thank them for the service to them.
Then would you just make them available? They can rent.
Well, I don't think it's much of a thank you if you're saying, hey.
Is it good one?
I'll buy it. Give my one.
But, but the question that I have is, is it repetitive? So they have 15 and then again in 25? Or is it repetitive?
So he's asking a 15, they get a jacket, 15 years later, you're gonna do one? So you guys weren't thinking repetitive, right?
No, this is, well, it was, so at 15, it was the jacket. At 25, it was a polo. And I was just trying to make the most, I was trying to make the most sense on it or make the best choice, because we've already missed so many. So yes, we should put it in the handbook and no, I didn't. I ordered one more. I ordered enough for the person that's coming up soon. No, I didn't go further than that. But the next person is not even in a year yet.
So how long you gotta be a board member before you get a jacket?
Yeah. I think those are rewards based on meeting times, aren't they?
Yeah. We have a sentinel, I think we have.
I have a sentinel. So what are we supposed to be?
So, so what's the parks and recreation contractual and what are the rentals?
Those are Jake's.
I didn't bring my P all this with me, because I thought you ran all this. I can look back. These are under the projects, not included in the original budget. Yeah.
But, well, they're extensions of the projects that were in place.
No, parks and rec, contractual's gotta be, that's paving the walkways at Wilmerite Park and Shands Park.
Right.
Um, out to widening the one in Shands Park and then from Wilmerite Park going from the parking area or from the current walkway.
It's just confusing. Why do you call, why is it called contractual? That's just.
Yeah, that's just.
Confuses me.
Because we're farming out the work to someone outside the village.
Yeah. With the paper.
That word throws us off all the time into the budget. We use it all the time. We're like, what exactly does that mean? Because there's clerk contractual, there's treasurer contractual. I think it's just a long cross to.
And now we're gonna have a line that says jackets?
Yep.
Well, yeah, it's more like it's a park and recreation capital improvement is what you, is what the project is.
That sounds legit.
That you just are, so happen are hiring outside people to do it, right?
Yep.
But you could have had village people do it, right? If you wanted to.
No, we don't, we don't have a paper. We can rent that stuff.
I don't think they were gonna.
Typically, the papers come with operators helping around.
Yes, that's a good, pretty good skill.
So what's the rentals?
That's for tech.
What's the rentals?
Right, Jake.
The rentals?
That's for road tech.
No, $4,000 for the rentals? I can look back at your, I can look at the email that Marsha sent and the POs on it.
Better than Mr. Chris White.
It is.
So the total last year then really is 252, something like that. And you've just split it up.
Yes.
And what's the, the total, um, the total surplus, if you will, that's going into fund balance? Six parcels is 260, 300.
Yes, it's more like 500,000. So and I, um, once we have, uh, once the numbers are wrapped up, like we've gotten the invoice for all the fiscal year '22 stuff and everything, I'll come to another meeting with kind of a synopsis for you. About where we were over, where we were under and why.
Maybe one of these meetings, we had to bring something, reduce it. And. Maybe put that in the, the board.
We were, um. And so we were over property tax sewer charges? 780, or even the contingency?
When we made the budget, the number of parcels, Jake would say the right word.
Oh, yes, this was what I explained that, about why we had to make the, the tax work change. It was a county mess.
Just to follow up on this quick, I'm in here, we'll add one. Rentals is the, is the rental of the paper and operator. The 11969, the park and rec contractual is the asphalt for those two walkways.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Sorry, may I, may I pause that question?
My question was in terms of property tax sewer charge. This accounts for more than the one property that was there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. Second it.
I mean, that, that was, that was a difference, I thought, of one property that was double.
Yeah, because it was, yes, it was in there two times. So we anticipated to receive more money because of the extra. We had to reduce that. But when Marsha and I sat down and do that, we set that down way prior to submitting the tax document. So we weren't aware of that change until very last minute.
Well, the 780 represents four properties. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what, which properties they were or why they were included when they shouldn't have been. Jake, do you remember when we were doing the budget? I think we were estimating how many CFOs would be issued by the end of the year, maybe?
I think we did estimate that. I don't think, but I mean, there's, you know, we remember going through, looking at the, looking at the sewer charges, how many properties we have, how many.
Right.
What our quarterly is for the commercials and what our monthly is for our one industrial user.
Yeah.
But this is, if I read this right, this is going from the sewer charges to a contingency line.
Well, it's reducing the property tax sewer revenue and correspondingly reducing the contingency line.
Oh, it's reducing.
Yeah. It's just, it's weird the way it's set up, that the budget, sometimes the increases look like decreases and vice versa.
So basically, this is expenditure to projects coming from what we did not use last year that is being carried over to this year.
Exactly. Except for the last two.
Right.
Correct. Except for the.
Rental proof.
The fireproof cabinets and the jackets and shirts. Those, that's a new, those are new things.
Right.
So, um, I'm working for a motion to accept these budget modifications, I believe, as they are written from the unassigned fund balance, first of all, to the following signed posts, major road repairs, no removals, no removals, vehicles, sidewalk equipment, capital outlay and storm sewer equipment and gutters. Also from. Also, from, uh, unassigned fund balance to major road repairs, parking wrecks, contractual rental clothing and office supplies. And we'll put in here as well sewer budget mod from property tax sewer charges to contingency. I can have a motion to approve these budget mods and transfers.
I'll make that motion, I'll say.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Marsha, for your explanation.
My pleasure.
Of all of this, and, um.
That's my lucky number.
Well, mine too. Oh, we're not watching like that. Uh, next we have a resolution to adopt seeker, uh, sequor. A resolution, seeker resolution of the village of Webster Board of Trustees concerning the proposed local law number seven of two thousand twenty-two, amending the zoning local law by replacing chapter one-seventy-five, article fourteen of the zoning law, local law of the village of Webster, quote, controlled site uses with, unquote, with, quote, site plan review and approval. So we are looking at changing here this, um, article fourteen with a wording change, controlled site uses to site plan review and approval, along with what that entails.
Did, did, did you receive and look at the short form environmental assessment form that Aaron prepared? Did that get distributed to the board?
I don't know if that was distributed to you guys yourself.
Right. I asked that it should have been distributed.
This is classified as an unlisted action?
Right. Because it's an unlisted action, a environmental assessment form has to be prepared. And look at that form in order to determine whether there is any type of environmental impact or not on the proposed, uh, action, which in this case is amending the zoning ordinance.
And.
Aaron sent it to me, uh. It's difficult, so.
I, I would agree, and this was to have been distributed by, uh, to board members, or to somebody to do that, and it hasn't been done.
Essentially, I, I could, I don't know what you want to do.
Can we go print it? I think he's, I think I got it, it's on the way.
I, I believe he, yeah, I'd have to look the email. I, I think you were included in the email, however, he said it. Why don't you just quick do that, because.
That would look like me and you.
Huh?
Looks like me and you, excuse me.
Just forwarded it.
Yeah, can you just forward it to me and I'll go print it?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's in here. Oh, no, this is not it. I don't, I think I just have to reply. I don't think I have this. Oh. Email.
I'll get it when you get down, I get down.
Well, when you get it, well, when you get it, you'll see there's not many of the yes or no boxes, you know, there's a bunch of questions. You've seen these before.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of questions that ask you about different aspects of the environment, you know, historical, and traffic, and all that stuff. Well, because this is, it's not a project, nothing's being built, you know, so most of them, there, there's not a yes or no answer, it's just, you leave it blank. But just, you should at least look at it before you even, you know, you, before you say that there's no environmental impact. Otherwise, it's kind of, um, a false, because how would you know?
I guess I would.
The assessment.
And you're correct, because here it says the village board fine, right, the proposed action will not be built.
Well.
And, so, well, we can't find that unless we were actually looking at what was presented to us, so.
Yeah.
It, well, in fact, it says, it says, uh, where is the village board specifically considered part two of the environmental assessment form? Well, you don't have it in front of you, so you haven't specifically considered it, so hopefully you haven't contained it.
Yeah, I just forwarded it to her.
Okay.
Um, I want me to just ask the questions and have the board? Let me ask the questions, can we have a break?
Take it very long.
No, I'm gonna be funny before you're done with that shit.
Why don't you, why don't you like go on to number seven or something, you know, you can do something else while we're waiting.
If we can do that.
Why not?
In the past.
Just skip.
Seeker first and then move down to.
Well, don't do six, we do, do seven, the letter of credit thing. We don't need heaven for that.
To resolution to approve the release.
Do that one.
It should be, I believe, item number eight at this point. Um, resolution to approve the release of three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and one cent from the letter of credit for Greenbrier Crossing per the request dated five twenty-four twenty-two and authorize the village court to sign a letter to five-star bank to facilitate the release of these funds. That is so that they can continue on, and moving along, I think they have two buildings, or moving on a third, and.
Yeah, they're doing pretty good.
In this release, with this release, they've effectively, um, completed all the water mains, all the sewer mains, and spent storm sewers for phase one, all that infrastructure's in it. Uh, they still have, um, you'll notice, they still have roadwork to do, some gutters, sidewalks, grading, seating, and things like that. That's reflected in there. They're broken down into sections. Um, they're broken down in the section, so, um, I was, you know, reviewed it, I went out there again today, looked at everything, talked to John, he did, uh, there was inspections on all the, um, sewer mains, the storm sewer mains that they put in, so I'm comfortable with, with their, uh, request. But everything they say on there is completed.
John's been out there?
Yes.
They live there, whatever?
Yeah.
Make sure things are. What I would ask for, um, motion to approve the release of these funds. I'm gonna make that check, it's worked over.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
It's not too hard.
Don't tell her I said that, though.
Maybe at this point, they'll know, but we're in, we're in a good place right now, so we can wait for her. Uh, discussion, this is item number nine, eleven Orchard Street, Public Sewer. Well, some changes are being made, five up there, and six. Uh, at any rate, we're on, uh, discussion on Horace Orchard. This is, uh, Bill Horace's property. And, um, I believe that, uh, they're looking to tie into, and is it dedicate? Or have their, um, considering the, requesting that the board, uh, consider dedicating the sewer line manholes and mains, which are currently in the easement that the village holds. Running along the west property line of Xerox property along Panama Drive, across parcel at eleven Orchard to about forty, I believe that that's what, forty feet?
Yes.
West of the east property line at fifteen Orchard, so it would be a connection, and, like, and Jake?
Yes, yeah, and all indications are that this dedication was probably expected to happen before, or should have happened before. Um, the sewer main that's there serves two parcels, and now it serves a third. Um, we received an easement for, over the sewer main already, saying that we couldn't go get in there and repair it and maintain it and everything else, but we just never, they never officially offered it for dedication, or took dedication. And this came up when they were looking to tie into, they wanted to tie into that line going across, um, rather than go across the creek again and tie into our main that's on the other side. And, um, yeah, absolutely, tie into that one, that makes more sense, and then we went creek crossing, and we started looking, and I found the easements. And I said, we should already have this, you know, on our maps, and it's, it's dedicated, but there was no record that it was ever dedicated.
So, so this section of sewer line that's being offered for dedication is all on property owned by or controlled by Bill Horace?
Well, yeah, the Horace family partnership, I believe, is, is what the name of it is. Well, one of whom's him, one's his son, and then there's only one that I think is, is the Horace family partnership, so it serves three distinct parcels.
I just couldn't, normally you're great at giving us maps of things, but there was no map, so. I, I had a hard time trying to just reading your letter, trying to figure out, is all this on one parcel or not?
Well, no, it's three separate parcels.
But are all three separate parcels owned by Bill Horace?
Technically not, no.
They own that.
One's Bill Horace and his wife, one is Bill Horace's son, and one is Horace family partnership.
Well, so you need an offer of dedication from all three owners of the properties. And then the village can accept it. You got a letter from Bill Horace, but, um, he doesn't own all three parcels, I guess.
Well, he's, I think the, I think the partnership, you know, the parcel, one parcel, he absolutely does, you know, his house, that's where it goes forty feet over. And the other parcel is one that's own, I don't know what position he has in the LLC, I assume it's an LLC or something. I don't know what position he has in that, but, and it does not cross the third parcel. It only, no, it serves the parcel, I'm sorry.
So, but physically, it's only on two parcels?
Right.
All right, that's where you could use, I thought you said it was on three parcels.
No, I'm sorry, no, it serves.
So it's not on the parcel owned by his son?
Right.
All right, well, he probably, I, I believe you're correct that he, the family limited partnership, he probably runs it, so, so fine, as long as Bill Horace owns owns the land, both parcels, then are you looking for the board to take a resolution now? Or it just said discussion?
I wasn't sure, I apologize.
Again, sure. If there's enough information provided for the board to take a resolution.
Well, that's what they need to know.
I don't know.
Did you look at the sewers, the, is the main need repairs, is it?
No, they've looked at the sewers, and it seems, everything seems like it's fine.
Well, because they've been, in effect, in effect, they've been owned by the village for the last, I don't know how many years, because they've been serving a couple of other properties, right?
Yeah, since like ninety, late nineties, I believe, when you.
Yeah, so, so, all right, so.
Yeah.
So this isn't like Xerox, where before you take dedication, you, you know, repairs need to be done, and all that kind of stuff. You're satisfied that they're in.
Yes.
Sufficient shape that the village, all right, so.
Yeah, and that we.
So if you want, they can just take a resolution tonight.
Yeah, we could definitely.
And it's gotta be, make sure it's in the minutes, so that, you know, in the future, you can look back and see, when did you take dedication?
And since they're doing construction every now, I think if the resolution's contingent upon positive inspection, I can add ten of those mains, and, you know, I'll come on that. Because they're doing construction every now, I would like to make sure they didn't, I, I know who's installing it, and I'm sure they're not gonna put a lateral into the main, but just to, to, or make it proper. As long as there's nothing, you know, broke there as part of the construction, I guess, I'm sure.
As far as I understand, from talking with Aaron, the, this line, which comes from that manhole that's on Bill's property, going across, uh, the new, behind the new building, actually, it's going behind it.
Yes.
It's not under it or anything like that, and there will be two laterals that will be connecting into it.
Yeah, two from the new building, yes.
From the new building.
Yep. You have two from the new building, and there's one from his house, and then there's one, and just like all the, you know, the sewer laterals, means the structure is responsible for the laterals, and the main would be the responsibility of the village. And then it crosses under that creek along Panama, and the main, your main runs north along Panama, and this is perpendicular to all of it.
Well, it, it's no different than, in effect, thirty years ago, the village should have taken dedication of this main.
Yeah.
So, if, if they damaged the, the main by whatever construction they're doing, they're responsible for it.
Right.
Right? So you don't need to make it this contingent on that.
Okay.
If they mess up and are negligent and do something to it, they gotta fix it, right? As long as that, because the village isn't doing any work on the main, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, my, my assumption is that this was supposed to be dedicated when we had the easements, and I don't know, there's just no record of it. Maybe it was, and they're just can't find the record of it in minutes or something. But, I mean, it makes no sense that we give an easement over to maintain it, and, and access it, if it wasn't ours, we wouldn't need the easement.
So we might as well take the, take the resolution tonight, and then it's done.
Um, and I'm asking for a motion to, um.
Basically, accept dedication.
Accept dedication of the sewer line manhole and mains that are currently in the easement that the village holds. Running from the west property line of Xerox property, along Panama Drive, across parcel at eleven Orchard to about forty-four, correct, forty-four feet west of the east property line at fifteen Orchard.
I, yeah, don't go, I, I know it's forty plus, you know, plus, yeah, and I know it's forty, whatever it's said in there, I guess, if we have it, but. Oh, is that what it says in the letter? I'm sorry.
The letter says forty-four feet.
Then, then that is accurate, because I know the author, he's very.
Daryl was just reading from Bill Horace's letter.
Okay.
And did you want in there contingent on inspection or something?
Still, I think, no.
No?
Don't cover that.
So that is the motion before the board.
I'll make that motion, I'll say.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. Am I good to, to the letter of credit, release, do I need to do that letter, then? Did that get approved?
It did get approved. And Jake has who made the motion and who seconded.
But that letter that I sent out, I can do that tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you want to go back to the seeker resolution. So, you now have in front of you the part one, and and this question, does the proposed, if you go down, about a third of the way down on the first page of the part one project information, so does the proposed action only involve the legislation, legislative adoption of a plan, local law, emergency administrator, or rule of regulation? And that's yes, so, um, and then you don't have to do the other questions, so, so if yes, attach a narrative description of the intent of the proposed action, and environmental resources that may be affected in your municipality, and proceed to part two. Well, I don't know if, um, I don't think Aaron did a narrative, but, you know, basically, we're localized to get rid of the controlled site. we're localized to get rid of the controlled site use approval part of the zoning ordinance and allow the zoning board to approve or disapprove with modifications, whatever one has to, site plans. So there's, there's really no environmental resources that may be affected.
Right.
So then, so then you can skip down, now you go to part two, and that's, this is the assessment form that has the lead agency you're supposed to look at.
Which someone did?
Huh?
Which someone did and filled out.
Well, yeah, you can go through them, but I think it's filled out correctly, that it's not gonna have any impact on any of these environmental things. Because, you know, theoretically, if the zoning board does its job correctly, if it approves a site plan, they should, part of their approval process is making, you know, they have to go through secret, and they have to make sure that the project they have proposed is not gonna negatively impact the environment, so. That's kind of the fail safe.
I would agree with one through eleven.
two thousand twenty-two, considering amending the zoning local law by replacing check to seventy-five article fourteen to the zoning local law of the village of Webster, quote, controlled site use with, quote, site plan review and approval.
I'll make that, I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Folito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We are moving on to that, I remember.
Nick?
Nine.
Nine? We're having additional holiday.
Juneteenth. No, you should, you gotta do the resolution to actually adapt the law.
Oh.
Which is probably more important than the secret.
Correct.
Alright, now that we have approved the secret now, and I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the board, village of Webster, board of trustees to adopt proposed local law number seven of two thousand twenty-two, amending the zoning local law by replacing check to one seventy-five article fourteen of the zoning local law of the village of Webster, quote, controlled site uses, unquote, with, quote, site plan review and approval.
I'll make that motion. Zach?
Trustee Folito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to.
Just, just pressing it, so.
Thank you.
Well, I think it was, so Heather, when, just sent out an email when it's filed with the Secretary of State, so we know when it's effective.
Okay.
And then.
It's been coming back a lot quicker.
Yeah, well, it's important for Jake and Aaron to know that, for like the one, I don't know if they're gonna go forward with that.
On Donovan?
On Donovan Street, but when they come back, they're gonna come back in front of the zoning board and not this board, because of this, you know, assuming it's, it's after it gets filed with the Secretary of State.
And I'll send it tomorrow, and I usually send it quicker, so it shouldn't be there by Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor and superintendent of public works to sign an MOU between the village of Webster and the union regarding the Juneteenth holiday. I believe that this is because, now it's a federal holiday, as of last year, we're putting this in progress.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Trustee Folito? I'm sorry. Trustee Folito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We should, I'll make sure any, a jacket day.
Jacket.
Jacket day. Celebrates.
Yeah, there is a big holiday.
Yeah.
Wow.
What else can we get?
All trapeze and, hey, get jackets.
Would you like to order one? You can afford it.
While we're here, we're gonna back a bunch of modifications for this next year. This year. Okay, we next have, what?
Marsha's favorite.
I'm trying to read all the, the.
I don't remember, thirteen fifty trailer drive? I mean, but if the parcel record is thirteen fifty, isn't it?
Is it thirteen fifty?
I'll look it up while you're reading.
Just, it is zero then.
I think, I don't know.
I think it's correct, because Marsha's, didn't you send it, the letter?
Yeah, thirteen fifty trailer drive.
One from thirteen fif, uh, one thirty-five?
Yeah.
Just looked it up?
No.
You, you don't have the, Wasp hasn't signed this yet, right?
We sent it to them, but not yet.
So the answer to that question is no, then. They haven't signed it yet.
Should they sign? They should sign first, right?
Well, the point is, is that, right, Daryl's not gonna sign this one until you get, sign one back from them, so you can change the thirteen fifty on that one when it comes back. And then, and then the other assumption is, is that they're not gonna change anything to it, they're just gonna sign it as it.
So we'll have to reset it to that, we sent out the one.
That said what?
Oh, you didn't look it in early to know.
And the one thirty-five, you set up that one?
The same, we, that didn't get changed, so that means it was wrong in the last one too.
Well, they never signed the last one.
Yes, they did, yes, they did, I just didn't, I, the one I sent you was just, I sent it quick. They sent the original one from twenty, last year.
It was sent in January of two thousand twenty-one.
And they signed it.
They did? I didn't think they ever, never, I didn't think they ever signed it.
Yeah.
If they signed it, why didn't this board ever?
Because wasn't this a new?
Why didn't the mayor sign it?
He did, this is the second one.
This is a new one?
Yes, yearly, right? We already had this.
This one is identical to the one that was signed midway through last year, when we were doing all that stuff about, are we allowed to do it? And I can't even remember.
I just don't remember. I know I drafted this in January.
And it was backdated to.
Well, it was backdated to June one, two thousand twenty-one.
Yep.
But I didn't realize or recall that it ever got signed.
Yep, it's all signed.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the one that we had them sign had the address as the, how it is now.
So you, you checked, you just put in, as you did this over, you just substituted in two thousand twenty-two.
Right, just changed the, the year.
Yeah.
And it'll, and, you know, coincide with the village's fiscal year. Because that's what you appropriated the fifteen hundred bucks for.
Right.
So this needs to be changed.
Reset.
Reset to them for.
As per signature and then.
Really? Thank you, we'll do that.
We should wait till that comes back.
Well, let it be cleaner then, that way you know they didn't make any changes and they signed it.
Can we even?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Table can fill.
Sure. Do we need a motion to take that down?
I need a table.
Do we need a motion table?
With a table.
Technically under Robert's rules of order, yes.
I have a motion to table the, the signing of the agreement between the village of Webster and the Webster Association of Senior Program Support.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have two resolutions regarding employees. One, the resolution to approve Kathy Bills as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term that ends May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
You're gonna do them both at once or you're gonna do it second?
Yeah, we'll do them both at once. Well, the second resolution is to approve Bart Nicholson as chairperson of the zoning board of appeals for a term that would end May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
But it's supposed to be May thirty-first.
You're correct. Thirty-one? Thirty-four?
Right.
It's just a table.
It's okay. Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passes.
Um, I don't have anything else.
Anything from the town? Have you heard anything regarding about?
Regarding sure. Anything from, I think we're, uh, moving on.
I have not, I have not seen, I have not seen the draft IMA that supposedly was drafted. So I.
Go figure.
Don't know what, what it is.
I have a question for you. Did Aaron call you about local law three, the accessory building, local law?
That was, yeah, it was twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
One of two. He apparently said there was a line missing out of it, so he's gonna, he's gonna call you.
We already talked about this a while ago.
Yeah, I think, I'm just gonna rewrite the thing, send it to you, and that's one seventy-nine, or one seventy-five fifty-nine A, it, when it went to the state, got, they poofed it up. There's things that they found that it was a sentence, it wasn't a sentence, I think, so.
Right.
But I was rewriting, sending it to you, and then it was set to start the process for local law eight, I guess it'll be now, might be director here.
Yeah.
What that was, I'm not sure what it was, that line three that was omitted was the setback, the setback was omitted, so you can put a structure on the line if you wish at this point.
Yeah, shit.
Well, that was not.
Well, something happened, it was, it was in the original local law as adopted. Somehow, something changed between then and what ended up with the state, and I, we can't really figure out what that, I think Jake is right when they, because the way it was phrased was deleting one sentence or.
Yeah, replace line.
Replace.
Is there a sentence with the following?
And it's whether.
So was that the first little part?
Was that, was that the third sentence or was it the fourth sentence or something like that?
My English teacher would not have counted that first sentence as a sentence.
Right. So we counted the sentence, I think we counted the sentences one way, but, but the Secretary of State counted them another way or something like that.
Is it possible to go back?
So now there's, so now there's confusion about it, yes.
Is it possible to say, look, this is not what we meant and we didn't realize? Is it possible that we don't want to redo the whole process again?
Let's deal with the state, I think it's way easier to do it here and this, I would, I don't know.
I can't remember now, because you, 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 me and, and Aaron had this conversation, but it was like a couple of months ago, and I can't remember what we decided was the best recourse.
I think it's just, it was just a matter of rewriting that paragraph A, that's all it is, is a little paragraph A and make it the way we wanna, you know, repeal one seventy-five fifty-nine A and replace with this, and it's a variant and replace with this and.
Because I never heard that it was wrong, and was it just because someone recently came and asked you about a shed, that it got renewed, I said, no.
I'm not sure how it came up with Aaron, but I think if somebody comes in and wants to, for a permit, wants to put a shed rate on the last line, I think we use Jake's grammar teacher's interpretation of what, which is the right sentence, so that you can't do it, until we do the new one, that where it's a little clearer.
Okay.
You know?
Because again, there's something about variance that right now, as it reads, they don't need it or something, and then that I didn't understand. So.
Six foot. Yeah, they're normally ten foot setback is what was in the original language and I'd be comfortable saying, listen, that's not, somehow there's a type of something that we've got here, right, we, here's what we mean and.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think Aaron has approved any permits for sheds inside the ten foot setback.
Okay, just let me know whatever.
It's, it hasn't been an issue yet, but just to clarify things.
Definitely need to clarify.
Well, otherwise, just review it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Heather?
Uh, yes. I'm gonna defer to Marsha, we need clerk slash treasurer.
Okay. Well, I understand that there's been some conversation about other villages providing either a temporary or a permanent additional wage increase due to inflation, since it's higher than it's been in over thirty years, I believe it is. So I put together a few stats to present to you. Let's see, from the information that Mayor Byers collected from the other mayors in the area, the average increase is a little over four percent for this year, the average wage increase. So I did the math about, like, what would it cost the village to give, to bring everyone up to four point two percent? That would be, and what we're thinking is that this increase would not be permanent, it would just be for this year, so that next year's increases would be based on the, like, the, the standard increase and not on the additional one. Clear? Like, if, if we, if I got a 3% increase this year and then the board authorized a 10% increase, then, then next year, my increase would be based on the 3% increase, not on the 10. So it wouldn't be a permanent bump in everyone's wages. Would just be for this fiscal year. That's what I did the math on anyway. So for one year of bumping everyone, all the employees to 4.2% for the year would cost a little over $32,000. Increasing everyone's wages for the year by 1% would be a little over $12,000. Or, um, increasing everyone's wages by 50 cents an hour would be $16,600.
Question, would we be able to use the COVID funds for this?
Uh, yeah, it does qualify.
Because that would make more sense to me to apply that to this. Yes.
Those COVID funds are slowly going away. And that is going to change the complexion of what we were looking at and kind of studying out of sewer projects. Just let me know that.
Of sewer projects? We, yep, sewer got all of last year's, um, ARPA money. And I, what did I do? I don't think I put any ARPA money in the budget. We can't, we can't consider it revenue until we've earned it. And we have to spend it to earn it. So we haven't budgeted or slated. I'm questioning. I can't remember what the budget looks like, but I don't believe ARPA money is in it.
So we haven't used that yet. Basically, we haven't used what we have as the first installment yet.
We've used the first installment. That all went to sewer.
The first one did.
Yep. The second installment has not been spoken for at all.
Have you actually received the money?
Not the second one. The second one, uh, the county, I think. It was the county or the state?
I think the money goes to the town. The town, if there's a village within the town, they give the villages share or something like that.
I can't remember. It came, it.
But the point is, you don't have the 300 and some thousand dollars sitting in the bank as we speak today.
Right.
No.
So you're saying.
So, so Jerry, the answer to your question is we can't use that, that money to pay for this because you don't have the money.
Yeah, but if you spend the 30, if you spend it, you can't get it as much as I can.
Well, then you can re, I suppose reimburse yourself.
Right.
Yes.
Or as Daryl says, if you, if the prior discussions were to also use that money again for sewer, it won't be all there for sewer. And I don't know what you guys discussed about.
For what?
For sewer.
True, because that was, this is changed in terms of about the initial conversation.
Well, our strategy was to, we wanted the ultimate end result to be, um, to put money away in reserves to start paying, to start preparing for the bonds that are due. So, but we can't put the ARPA money there. So we spend that ARPA money on other things that we had to spend it on anyway. And then all the surplus, surplus, um, fund balance from sewer will go into reserves. And I imagine a similar fate for this year's ARPA money. Whether it goes to sewer, whether it goes through sewer regular expenses or general regular expenses, it's ultimately going to end up in reserves. Jake?
Yes. If, if, am I correct? If the ARPA funds is, if you use it for something like this, it's a look back. So you would say, rather than a percentage, you would say, if you worked during this period of COVID and you said maybe 50 cents an hour for the hours worked between this time and this time, this date and this date would be the way you would have to configure. So it would just be kind of like a one-time payment rather than a wage increase. It would be kind of a, here's an offset. Because it's, it is, it's a look back for any hours worked during that, actual work during that time period, right? Okay. Because then their wage, their wage would stay the same. There'd just almost be a, there's a one-time infusion.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, like, I appreciate what you're saying, but if, if the board gave you the originally deserved 10% this year, then next year, when it was based on three, you'd actually be going backwards.
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah, yeah. It's difficult for someone to have seen that money and then not see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what do you do next year if inflation is still the same as this year?
Then you talk about it again.
You, you do what's available, you know? If something's available now, you can take advantage of it. But next year, the option's out there. I mean, we're, we're still in a business and we still, it's still taxpayer money. We can just, still got to be fiscally smart. And if it's not, doesn't make sense, next year is making sense. Right?
It needs a contract.
Contract.
They have to go for four years. As a, for the end of choice.
Five years.
Just give them a day.
So like I said, I know that employees that, or partners with them, people use this money just for the same things.
What was it, what was the percentage again in the beginning? And you said most, most villages are.
A 4.2.
4.2.
So it would be a 4.2% lump sum?
It could be true.
Well, what, what exactly is that 4.2%? Does that mean average wage increase the villages gave its employees last year? Or is that some extra payment that the villages are giving their employees for inflation? Because of inflation?
Some were and some weren't. That was just, that's this year with this budget.
Which is conversation I shouldn't take.
We don't know.
I'm still, I'm still, I'm still confused. So did everybody get like a 3% raise this year for the Village of Webster? What was it?
Union got.
2.4.
Yeah, union got 2.4, appeals got 3.
So are you saying then the people that got 3% will get an extra 1.2% to equal this 4? All right, so it's not like what you said, Carol. It's not a 42, 4.2% on top of what everybody got. It's, it's to raise it up from whatever they got to 4.2%.
Right, right.
And not every village did this.
Well, we don't know at this point how, whether, whether these are just very regular increases or whether they bumped them up because of the economy. I don't know.
Three of the villages did. They sent to, three of the villages did it.
Outside of their normal budget process?
They did it, it sounds like no, it was, they did it as part of the budget.
See, that's looking, that's the.
Well, it's right now.
To me, that's the matters in part.
Right, and when Heather talking about that, the first thing I said was just to talk to the budget.
Which we did, we did speak about it. And you just, that was the one that you ran and they're always here and you just, we need to back up. So we did bring it before the budget, before we passed.
Daryl will know from the beach.
Yeah. In a Hawaiian shirt with a, with a beautiful background.
Send it down.
Al said no, too.
I didn't hear that.
Well, I will ask a question next week when I meet with the other nine mayors. I'm going to tell them, is it, like, no? Should I find out from them tentatively what they're doing?
So if they said no, they did, none of them did, does that mean that's where you stand?
I don't know.
Or to an animator?
That was from the mayors. That was from the mayors of minus one. Mayor Lee did not answer your email. He, so I.
How many have three, four, three, five, five emails?
You missed it. There were, they were down. I'm sorry, they were. I, 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 you know, I monitored just to make sure you don't miss anything. And it went down now.
That's true.
You, it's, you just missed it. But are, it's, in your defense, it is the new email situation.
I think you're not helping your cause right now. I think he's going to say everyone but Heather.
That's okay, whatever.
That includes the board, right?
It's up to you.
Well, I guess we know our answer. We don't wait until he tells us.
You did get your invitation to that mayor's center by the way, too.
Are we?
It is the 16th. You just got it, your invitation. So now you know. Great.
Well, that's just why, thank you for the information. As far as I'm concerned, unless somebody would like to turn it up. But I think the full board would necessarily be needed to respond to, and not just the three of us. Okay? Um, Jake?
Couple of things we're milling this week. And milling the circles we did on Wood Street, Kittleberger Park, the circles take a lot of time, a lot of detail work, and obviously they can't run straight through. And then the east end of Kittleberger Park and Reynolds Road near Duncan Doran. So those are the areas that are going to be approved. Um, the circle, that's the project, the Kittleberger Park circle where we're in, the median, raised median in the center and trying to, and changing the traffic pattern around there to improve the safety of that intersection. It's kind of wild west before, so we're finally getting, get to that. I had the IMA, but that was discussed. Local law eight was already discussed. And the last thing is 1-800-POTHOLE. 1-800-POTHOLE is the number for New York State to rep, uh, to report potholes such as the humongously deep one at 250 and 404, which is its favorite. Also known as the Four Corners. If, they've been notified about six times. If you damaged your tire and blew a tire or damaged your rim, that's, New York State DOT has a small claims, uh, link on their website where you can file the claim if it's something that they know about and they have known about it. Frankly, I'm sick of getting screamed at because we're not filling a pothole. Um, it's, they don't give us money for 250 or 404 because they're state roads, so they should maintain them. There's also Monroe East residency that people can call up directly, but that 800-potthole number is established for that. They also have that on 250 here, Commercial Street in the State Right Way and 404, West Main Street at Berry Drive. Those are all ones at the state that we've talked to them about numerous times. 250 up near Pontiac is another area. They did come out and take care of a lot up there, near the expressway, but stopped short of the crater, the Grand Canyon there at the Four Corners. So we're trying to get them back.
Is that the one that I always hit when I make a writing, turn that into Main Street?
Yeah, yep, but.
Add one in Holbrooke, Holton, right?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I think they're suffering the same issues with labor as everybody else, but, um, they certainly know about it and it'd be nice to get them out to make those repairs. If we do, they're never going to do it. And frankly, I don't want to spend village taxpayer dollars fixing something that's not the village taxpayer's responsibility. If they want to reimburse us for it, I'd be out there tomorrow with some asphalt, filling the holes at least temporarily. But one of the problems is, is if we go out there tomorrow, I'm going to do it in an unmarked vehicle because I don't want everybody yelling at us thinking we should have done it a long time ago. You know, so I might just put in the back my pickup truck and dump it out.
Don't take your truck.
Do they contract with the town for plowing?
No, well, for plowing they do. Yeah, plowing they do, um, but not for other, you know, these, no. So actually, everybody that calls up, um, so far, you know, I, I haven't been threatened, but I call and tell them, just call 1-800-POTHOLE, that's what I'm going to do. I'll, every time somebody calls, I call 1-800-POTHOLE, I tell them to do it. And if they say that the tire was broke or their wheel was damaged, which are usually, they understandably, they anger people when they call, dump. If you say, uh, there's a small claim line on, on the DOT website, so utilize that. And so, um, hopefully get their repair done. It's unfortunate. Um, I wish, you know, there's something we can do, but maybe if we, if, if they do say that they'll reimburse us for it, then I'll, um, see if we borrow a truck so it looks like them doing it.
Did you have a conversation with them?
I have not did that conversation with, with the DOT yet. Um, I usually, like I said, I usually utilize the 800 number. I, a couple of weeks ago, I emailed them and said, what's, you know, what's the Monroe East, engineer in charge of Monroe East residency, they call it? And, you know, what's going on? We, I'm getting calls constantly about these things. And they're like, we're out doing potholes every day. We're here to try and make it out there real fast. And they said they did, you know, they did some, they did a lot near 104. Um, but it's not the, I think they might have gotten the material out of the, one of the Four Corners to fill it. But it seems to get, it's literally seven inches deep. It's insane.
So avoid that.
Yeah, so. That's it.
Thanks, Jake. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers, because we will have a meeting before that.
Oh, yeah.
It's one of the best holidays.
Are you going to call them? Call them?
No, I don't.
Pool open?
Yes, yours?
Yes.
Everybody has a pool?
Mine is.
He opened his name.
Everyone. Pool party at dinner?
Yeah, Carol said.
We had an.
Uh, let's see, our next village board meeting will be June 23rd. And we have a tentatively slated village workshop for June 28th, but I'm not sure if that's going to take place or not. But tentatively, we scheduled that and we will let you know on the 23rd. So that's at 6 o'clock.
I think everyone was good with that. I just had a chat with you and I think, I think Al said he was good too. If you guys are okay with that, we can do it.
So our next, next month, our next board meeting, scheduled and agenda, it will not say calendar.
Okay, yes.
That's good.
It's an after-order, sorry.
Well, is there anything else to be, to be ordered? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
For your attendance. I did not take my, my 47.
Good.